Operation Clean Duncanville at 8:00 AM. At 3 o'clock is Kidsville and Splash Pad grand opening. 8:00 PM is Music in the Park and then movies Top Gun. April the 7th is Dark in the Park. The 2024 Solar Eclipse Festival. April the 8th at 12:00 PM is also the Dark in the Park. 2024 Solar Eclipse Festival. April 9th is the Budget Workshop with the City Council. April 16th is a City Council meeting. April 20th, 11:00 AM Duncanville 300 Junior Grand Prix. 12 is Keep Duncanville Beautiful Garden Luncheon at Lakeside Park. April 22nd is the first day of early voting. April 27th is Concert in the Park. And April 30th is the last day of early voting. May 2nd is National Day of Prayer. At the Recreation, 12 o'clock at the Recreation Center. May 4th is Election Day. And, and at 8:00 AM is Keep Duncanville Beautiful Community Cleanup. May 7th is City Council Meeting. May 11th is Movies in the Park. May 13th is Police Memorial Ceremony. May 18th is Concert in the Park. May 19 to the 21st is the International Council of Shopping Centers Conference in Las Vegas. And April 21st, I'm sorry, May 21st is City Council Meeting. May 25th from 9:00 to 1:00 is the Fire Truck Pool. May 27th is the Memorial Day Holiday and also the Memorial Day Ceremony at Memorial Park. That's all.
Just for information to council members. Since the municipal election being made, the fourth canvassing of the votes usually by the time we get it back from the county, having the official count usually takes another three to four, sometimes five to six days before we know. So sometime between the fourth, I really doubt we're going to have it for the 7th City Council meeting. So probably I'm guessing somewhere between the fourth and maybe the 11th and 14th, you'll be called in for canvassing the votes. It only takes three of us to do that because it requires full council. So just want to mark that in your calendars as an FYI. Yes, Mr. Contreras.
Quick question, not to get off the calendar exactly, but on the Dark in the Park, is that something where the city is going to be providing sometime type of eye protection to the people? Yes, we know. It's sort of your guess.
Okay.
We're also working with the school district hosting an event at Arington Park for their fifth and sixth graders. And we're providing the glasses for the sixth graders and the Rotary Club is voting for them for fifth graders.
Okay, very good. Yeah, but good question because I had on my calendar, because I just saw it again on the front page here for February 20th. The CIP plan, obviously we're not doing that.
No, we're not doing that, no.
Was that?
Leave it in that from the calendar. Yeah, we have to move it from the calendar. And I'll let her know when it moves to the front side.
All right. Is there any time when we might have that?
The, the April 9th Budget Workshop is the one that we want to do on the Capitol. I had put it against the 26th and AR was in conflict with calendars. We had, that's the night of District 3, I believe. So it's April the 9th.
Okay. Anything else before we move on? Okay, City Manager, do we have a briefing on Intergov implementation?
So as, as I've been getting in the community and talking with businesses and individuals in the community, one of the, the number one complaints or concerns that I've heard is relative to permitting. And this is nothing new to, I know, permitting process and it's nothing new to any of you. One of the challenges that I'm finding is the communication between the various departments that have to review projects in order to give issue permits. And specifically, the Intergov program. The city purchased that program in 2019 and it has never gone live. We've continued to spend money with Tyler Technologies for the Tyler Technologies side of that implementation, but it has never gone live since 2019. The current program that is used will be sunsetting at the end of this year. So we're at a point now where we either have to go with Intergov or another program. And we've already invested so much in it. It's, you know, the question was, what do we need to do to push it across the finish line at this point? So I reached out to Kevin Price that I know from Barry Dunn. He's on the screen back here. Barry Dunn has worked with the City of Duncanville before. Barry Dunn has done a lot of work across the country with Intergov implementation. The challenge that we have is the, the costs that have been paid to date, which it's a big number. The City of Duncanville has invested since 2019, $508,953 in the Intergov program. With estimated, and thank you Jennifer for providing that number, between the original licensing, the support, the Tyler Technology staff, some of the stuff that was previously done in 2019 and 2020. And then each year we've paid just under $50,000 in licensing fees, but it's never gone live. It's never been used. So I reached out because we, it, it would be a challenge with the existing staff to get it fully live at this point without having some sort of project management. And that's why I reached out to Kevin Price who's with us. And I've asked him to just kind of provide an overview also. And Kevin, if you want to kind of jump in and based on your experience of where we're at, I know you've really investigated where we're at currently. And if you could share with council what it's going to take to get it.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Godspeed. It's nice to meet you, Kevin Price, our principal with Barry Dunn. And as mentioned, you know, our team has worked on a number of Intergov implementations across the country. We've worked with actually over 16 different implementations at this point. Most recently taking more into Kansas Live earlier this month on, on Intergov. And we're kind of in the final post-live phases with, with them. So our, our involvement in these projects can really take kind of one of two levels of support. Often we are asked to be the project manager on behalf of our city clients. So in that role, we're acting as the project manager through the implementation. And then we kind of after go live and would step back and then it would be the city led kind of on an ongoing basis. And then the level of involvement that we commonly provide is what we refer to as oversight, which is more of an advisory role where there's a city project manager. We're helping lead certain activities throughout the project. Things like vendor compliance or project compliance, review, testing, training, oversight, some of the critical items around making sure the city is ready to go live. And so in that oversight role, we'd be involved heavily in key activities, but really supporting the project manager that would be city, city definitely. Happy to go into more detail, Mr. Finch.
All right. Well, and if I, if I just could, so I asked Kevin to provide us with both of those proposals, with Barry Dunn being the project manager, coming in and do everything from A to Z for us, as well as the advisor. And they provided that. The advisory role, I think, is something that the council should consider because we have so many software projects and capital projects that if we hire Barry Dunn to come in and be the project manager and just finish it for us, when they're done, that knowledge walks out the door with them. If we hire a project manager on staff, then they can provide the support and then we retain that knowledge. Plus, I can also share with you that we've had meetings this week with the Best Southwest Regional Communications Center. As you know, we're getting ready to go through a pretty substantial upgrade there. That's a $6.4 million project. There's going to be project support that's going to be needed for that with DeSoto as well as Duncanville and Cedar Hill. We've got any number of software programs that need support, records management, as well as our capital projects. And, and I believe in my conversation with human resources and with IT, we could hire a project manager, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000 a year, give or take, but retain that person who would be here to support us with all of our projects instead of, again, that knowledge going out the door. So the proposals, do you want to just share with them the 30,000 foot number for the two proposals?
Yep. So we have proposed that our general approach here is that, you know, kind of the time material is kind of as encouraged. So if it's not needed, it would never, never be invoiced. But on the full-time project management, we estimate about 120 hours a month over about a, a six-month timeline plus two months of post-live support. So that would, over an eight-month timeline, estimated 960 hours. So that would be about $225,000. The oversight role would be about half that effort. So still eight months, about 60 hours a month, 480 hours for an estimate of $112,000. So the full-time, 120 hours a month, halftime, or the oversight advisory, about 60 hours a month. And, and those levels are based on our experience with Intergov, but also the, the team that is overseeing, that has been involved with the city in terms of re-engaging with Tyler. We've recently worked with that same implementation director in that team and have experience with that specific group within Tyler that manages implementations in this region of the country. And notably the Lawrence, Kansas example I mentioned, it's some similar team members. So some familiarity with the team that's re-engaging with the, the city on the Tyler side as well.
So the, the total cost is really about $225,000 whichever way we do it essentially. If, if we hire them or if we hire a project manager in-house, at least for this first year, and then that project manager could go on to the other projects. In addition to that 508 that's already been spent. So it's three quarters of a million dollars on this program.
Question. In cases like these with individuals or corporations such as Barry Dunn, you mentioned the possibility for us to consider hiring a project manager roughly $100,000 a year. But these types of individuals are also employed by companies like Barry Dunn. And that individual would be contracted for to sit here as a, let's say, a permanent resident of the City of Duncanville in terms of project manager as well. Has that cost been countered with the actual hiring of an individual to be on board for $100,000? And is the $100,000 fully loaded or is that just a salary exclusive of benefits?
Great questions. And so in my conversations with HR, I mean, from a range, you're probably talking 80 to 120 for a salary range, right? And the benefits, but if you're able to get somebody maybe younger, energetic and, you know, at a lower price, you know, you, you could be 100, 100 and a quarter. But again, we haven't even advertised. The other thing I would tell you is I've met with the city managers of Cedar Hill, Lancaster and DeSoto. All three of those municipalities have project managers on staff. And they do it exactly against the concept that I'm presenting to you, that the project manager would be staff in-house and then continue on from one project to the next, continuously overseeing and help them provide implementation of those projects. So yes, I mean, we could absolutely have Barry Dunn do it or, or even contract with somebody. But again, do we keep that person and keep paying that cost, you know, on and on?
Yeah, and that's the ROI, I guess, in terms of having somebody on board, having them on staff versus having hired. So if you're a consultant on board for a full-time execution. That's true.
In your opinion right now, who would the contract manager be working under in the city if we brought somebody in?
If we were to hire an employee? I, I don't know. We actually had that conversation. HR was reaching out to the other three municipalities for me today to see where that would be. It probably would not be IT. It would probably, whether it's administration or possibly public works, but it's still to be figured out.
Because the projects would be across a lot, a crew of covered projects. We have not just IT projects, but every project we have working for the city.
Correct.
Well, let me start by saying thank you first of all for the transparency and providing, because I did ask how much are we looking at as a total of now? Because in December 5th, we had this as an item toward F. And I specifically asked, before your time here, would we need any additional resources? And at that time, it was no, and I don't think so. Now, doing to your research and looking into it, you discover the additional resources that we need. $508,000 is a lot that we have spent to not have anything to show for. And when it's all said and done, we'll be looking at 800, nearly $800,000. I agree, we need a project manager, yes. Some to keep the knowledge in-house. But it is concerning for me that we've had something since 2019. And I know that's before you and you haven't, it's not on you or whatever. $508,000, that's just a lot to take in at the moment.
If I could just piggyback on something for saying that. The other thing is I want to be very transparent. Even hiring a project manager, let's say we bring in a project manager and bring in Barry Dunn to guide the project manager, there's still, the project manager is going to have to be working with staff, going to have to be working with our permitting folks, going to have to be working with our building officials, neighborhood services, right? So there's still going to be time that is taken away from them actually going out and doing their job that we're going to have to absorb. The same for the implementation of the new software with the Regional Southwest Communications Center, right? There's actually fire and police and everybody else. They're going to have to be inputting that. And so there's, there's hidden costs there. I just want to be very, as clear as I can be about that. I don't know what those costs are, but there's other costs.
Unknown, rather.
Sure, okay, fair, yes.
Mr. McNabb, then, Mr. Contreras.
And then again, thank you. One of, one of my concerns and maybe Mr. Price answers, maybe you can answer. I'm, I'm looking at this and it's kind of like, okay, we're, we're already kind of into March or, or close to March. And we're talking about hiring somebody. Is this, is this an emergency type of process? Because I, I mean, I'm just timeline it out and it's kind of like, if this thing goes.
Sunset?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so the, the plan would be, again, having this discussion tonight, bringing it to you on March 5th as long as you generally want to see it. And, and Kevin has already told me, I've got to find a project manager on staff quick. And because I'm also saying to him, I need this implemented in six months. And so it's almost that we have to hold each other accountable because we don't have a choice. Our current program sunset's December.
If it would be okay, I can add, not to further confuse the two options, but we have also had past situations where we started off in that project manager role while a hiring process occurred and then transitioned back to that advisory role when there had been timeline crunches. So that, that could also be something that, knowing we've got an end of year sunset of the current system and, you know, understanding what hiring timelines can look like, that could also be something that we could, could explore further if there was interest.
Yeah, Mr. Contreras.
Well, first I'd like to ask, does that, that option right there, does that set your mind at ease a little bit more? If we could do that?
Well, I still.
I still need to see it happen.
Well, I, I like that idea. I think that might be a good, a good option since we're right in between. I don't know that we can answer this tonight, but I'm going to ask you. What, what is the, are the duties and responsibilities? And what background are we looking at for a project manager if we're hiring somebody? It's just a question I'm going to throw out there, but we don't need to answer that tonight unless you have a short answer.
Well, there, there are certifications for project managers and job descriptions have been, HR was able to get those today and provide that to me. So that is something that we could bring back as part of, so you can see that.
All right, thank you.
Will we be successfully implemented by the sunset of the current system? Because I've been a part of implementation, I think we all have. And there are times when you have to work out kinks, get it implemented, try it out and then work the issues out. Do you see that happening in time of the sunset?
I, I don't think we have a choice. And that's where bringing in somebody like Barry Dunn who has the experience and Kevin has done this. And Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you actually even have an expert from the Dallas Fort Worth Metroplex that can provide support directly to us, right? We're going to have to do it if we're moving forward, yes.
Yeah, looking at this from a DRP perspective, our track record doing that is not real successful. We've had issues in the past and it's likely why we spent a half million dollars and gotten nowhere with that for internal issues that are going to be for come. So it's.
We had to.
Yeah, it's, it's an immediacy and it's mandatory. I think, Mr. City Manager, thank you for bringing this to our attention and being able to rely on a firm that you have dealt with in the past in terms of their credibility and track record in other places. And knowing we've got the P-25 coming up on, what's going on with the regional dispatch center. It's, it's almost something that we, we can question it, but we know that it's going to be on the horizon. We have to approve this at some point. So you're bringing forward to this for approval on March 5th, City Council. Everybody, I mean, it's like a comfortable, uncomfortable feeling. You know, we've got to take care of, we've got to take care of business and we appreciate being briefed now knowing what's coming up on March 5th rather than being briefed on March 5th and taking care of this. Always thank you for that. All right, anything to add? Okay, Mr. Price, thank you very much. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have finished the briefing work session topics. We've got like 17 minutes to go before City Council. We have three executive session items. Mr. City Attorney, can we do that? Do we start? What's your best options on it?
I'll go with one and two. Three might take a little bit.
Let me read one and two into the record and then we will go ahead and go into executive session. Item number one, City Council's meeting, post-executive session pursuant to section 551.072, text to the court of purchase, sales, exchange or acquisition negotiation of property generally located south of Ice Pointe, east of Santa Fe, west of Cockroaches Road, north of Weetland, within the corporate limits of the City of Duncanville Island. Number two, City Council's checking meeting, detective session pursuant to 551.072, text to government code. Delivering the sale, exchange, lease or value of Duncanville Field House pursuant to section 551.071, text to government code to seek little advice from the City Attorney regarding the same. City Secretary, we are recessing 6:44. Thank you.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your forbearance, coming in just a little bit late. We had some executive session to go through. So with that, calling the meeting to order. Say, I got it. Timestamp, calling meeting to order at 7:07, City Secretary. Okay. Let's see. Do we have an invocation, City Secretary? We do not. Oh, yes, Chaplain Ruiz. Yes, please rise. Police Chaplain Ruiz.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Let's pray. Father of God, we just come before you today, Lord. And I pray for the council, Lord. I pray for this community, Lord. We pray for wisdom. We just pray for protection, Lord. For our fire, our first responders, our police officers, Lord. And we pray blessings over their lives. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Please roll me pledges to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the children of the Father, Son and God. One nation of the God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all. I am the text of the Father, I pledge allegiance to the Father, I pledge allegiance to the Son, I pledge allegiance to God. One, one indivisible. Couple of notes of housekeeping. Mr. Vera Cruz will be absent tonight from District 1. And we were able to cover in executive session before coming in here, items in executive sessions number one and number two. So we still have item number three on executive session to cover. We will do that at the very end of the City Council meeting. Moving on to item number one, the reports. For the mayor's report, I have just one item I would like to talk to you about very quickly. And that is kudos to our Recreation Center and the entire staff over there for a wonderful evening of daddy-daughter dance. I don't know if you had a chance to just wander over and take a look at what was going over there, but it was a wonderful opportunity to see the daddies with their daughters. And it was just, I don't know, it's very heartwarming to see the, the daddies in our city bringing out their daughters and their kids to have a great time. So I wanted to thank Noah Garcia and Mr. Bart Stevenson, Director Parks Recreation. And I don't know if Tyler was involved in that or not, probably not. But the Recreation Center did a wonderful job decorating and taking care of the daddy-daughter dance. So I just wanted to mention that. Any other City Council member reports? Mr. Coons.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that on next week, Monday, February 26th at 6:00 PM, we're having, primarily it was for our district, but you know, I wanted to invite anybody who wants to come that we're having a meeting with Police Department on crime and crime prevention. And so if that's something that you're interested in, you can attend. Again, that's Monday, February 26th at 6:00 PM. And it's going to be in the library, the meeting room, as soon as you walk into the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McNabb.
Thank you, Mayor. On Wednesday, February 7th, we had a District 2 neighborhood meeting. And I want to say it was well-attended and also just good conversation. I want to thank you, Mr. Finch, for being there as well.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none, okay.
I'm going to piggyback off what Don said. I want to thank Mr. Finch for coming out on Saturday and all the residents that came out there and froze with us as we were able to talk about some things that were important to the district and to the, the people outside the district too, so our community in general.
Yeah, thank you. I have to digress for a moment. City Manager, this, I did not have any indication that Mr. Cherry Brown needed to speak and things are not working well up here. So maybe you could look a little, a little maintenance, thank you very much. All right, I'll look for hands. Any other council members' reports? All right, thank you. Okay, moving on, a City Manager's report.
Yes, Mayor, Council, thank you. Just briefly, coming up on March 16th, we have a District 1 Council meeting. And I believe on March 26th, we have the District 3 at Armstrong Park. Also, super excited just to remind the, the community, coming up on April the 6th is our Kidsville and Splash Pla, Splash Pad grand opening. And on April the 7th, I know the council was briefed a little bit earlier this evening, we intend to have the Emerald City Band at Armstrong Park at 8:45 for Solar Eclipse Party. So that's April the 7th at 8:45. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, moving on to, we skipped item number two. We don't have any proclamations or presentations tonight. Moving on to item number three, citizens' input. An in-person citizen comments will be heard during the regular session, keeping with the City Council's rules of procedures adopted October of 18 of 2022. Electronic mail comments will no longer be read aloud and paper copies, if provided, if sent to us, will be provided to all City Council, made part of the record of the minutes. Pursuant to section 551.007 of text government code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address City Council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the Act prohibits the City Council from delivering any issues not on the public agenda and such non-agenda issues may be referred to City staff for research and any future action. All persons addressing the council are adopting, by the adopted rules, which means you have two minutes to speak. And please, when you come forward, when I call you, give your name and address for the record. So I will call forward individuals that have submitted cards to speak in the order that I have received them. First individual is Mark Graham.
Mark Graham, 410 Santa Fe Trail. I want to discuss the issue of dumping at the lad. We're once again having people come down and dump on the property. I know y'all put up signs down on the southwest corner, I believe. I, I don't know that any dumping goes on down there, but we get it on the back side, the north side frequently. And this week, I picked up five bags, someone came down and dumped trash. Right now, there's two dumps, someone cut down a tree, just brought it down there and dumped it. And in the process, because there's no sign saying vehicles not allowed in this area, they drove down there and left mud tracks everywhere. We're seven months into this, seven months. How long does it take to get a little progress on something like signs? It does not seem to me that this is going to affect the master plan in any form or fashion. It's not going to do anything to disrupt anything except for perhaps making people think before. think before they just go down there and do. There's nothing saying that's a nature preserve, nothing. I don't understand that either. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to first, I just want to come and say thank you to Mr. Hager and you, and you as a City Council, for your patience, for your listening skills, for your consideration, both on the LAD property and on the upcoming potential value that lay on it. So just wanted to say thank you so much for your thoughtful questions over the past couple of years, for your consideration, and for being just an advocate for all sides of people who care about their environment, who care about the biodiversity. So just wanted to say thank you for being by the people and for the people and of the people. So thank you so much for your time.
And please state your name and address to the record.
Oh, yes, sir, I'm sorry. I meant to say, my name is Justin Reese Edwards. I live at two two six Buzzell Street. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Robbie Robbins.
Hi, my name is Robbie Robbins, three four three Shorewood Drive. I wanted to speak in favor of the Native Landscaping Ordinance that's being considered. As you may know, there has been a sharp decline in our monarchs this year. It's all over the news. Being able to plant native plants that can sustain not only the larval stages, but also our monarchs as they're navigating to Mexico during their migration would greatly impact that. So I think it's something that we should definitely consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Jackson.
Amy Jackson, Executive Director of Duncanville Community Theater, nine thirty-four Cambridge Drive in Duncanville. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Last fall, I, along with other DCT fans, came before you requesting a new long-term lease, allowing DCT to remain at one oh six South Main, the only performance home we have ever known. And while it took a bit to iron out the details, along with Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays thrown in, in the mix, on January ninth, you unanimously approved that very thing. Thank you. Thank you for your enthusiastic confidence in the quality of our art, your unique understanding of the economic impact of DCT on our community, and your keen awareness of the positive quality of life DCT has for all of our citizens. Originally built in nineteen sixty-four as a council and court building with City Hall next door, this building has now served as a community theater for over thirty-five years. Your treasured vote now ensures that a thriving community theater will remain on Main Street for many years to come, offering a positive and inclusive space for artists to perform and audiences to enjoy. As I said in October, so much has changed about that location over the years, but we're still there. We, the Duncanville Community Theater Board of Directors, the membership, our artists, our volunteers, and our patrons are immensely grateful that you have extended our stay. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim Jones.
Hello, Jim Jones, sixteen twenty-seven Nob Hill Circle. Excuse me, and I'd like to speak in support of the Native Landscape Ordinance. It certainly makes sense. It's very forward-thinking. It certainly gives one of your commissions a nice win. It adds color to the city of Duncanville. It will probably end up saving some folks some money on planting and on their water, and it just simply makes sense. I hope you support it. Second, regarding the Charles F. LAD Nature Preserve, the Duncanville Nature Conservancy of five oh one C three would like to send, extend an invitation to the Mayor and Council and the citizens of Duncanville to the first LAD Fest on April thirtieth at the Hopkins Senior Center that evening. And we will be having a variety of speakers who will tell you why they are there, what the LAD means to them, and what they hope LAD does for the city of Duncanville. We will have a special guest speaker. We will have Parks and Wildlife there, master naturalists, executives from Boy Scouts of America, Village Tech. We will have our City Manager there, and then we will end with the Blackland Prairie Raptor Center, having two or three falcons, hawks, and owls doing a demonstration. And along with that, we will also have charity auctions. So we hope to see you there, April thirtieth.
Thank you. Ali Assey, did I say that correctly?
My name is Ali Assey. The address is seventeen oh three South Main in Duncanville. I'm here to see if you guys have any question about the development we're trying to do at the seventeen oh three South Main for the parking lot grant.
Just for your information, that has been moved from consent to individual consideration. We will be taking that up here in this council chambers later this evening.
Okay.
Thank you. Erica Browning.
Good evening, Erica Browning, four four two East Cherry Street. I have a little potpourri of items tonight. First of all, I want to thank the Council for their questions that they ask whenever we have a briefing or we have items up for a vote. I'm just really glad to see that everyone is asking thoughtful questions. I also wanted to mention that I've been watching online lately, and the camera does not always pick up the vote, so we don't know who is voting in which way. And I've brought that up via email, and at the last meeting, it was still an issue. So I just wanted to bring that up. I also want to put my vote in for the Native Landscaping Ordinance. I do think that there should be things in place, which I have seen in the plan, to make sure property values retain their value and it doesn't start looking trashy. And the last thing I would like to bring up is something that's fairly recent, although we've had a problem with it in the past, and that is ATVs running up and down the street. There's one that is blue that likes to pop wheelies as he walks, runs down the street while kids are coming home from school, which is a little bit dangerous. There's a little orange one that's new today that the girl that rides it is obviously underage and has a little boy riding with her. And not only do they just go up and down the street making noise and being dangerous, but they like to turn around in my neighbor's yard. And they're elderly, and they don't really know what to do about that. And I have called the police, and I have sent in things through the See Click Fix, and I just want everybody to be aware of it because it's an ongoing issue. Thank you.
Tabitha Brookstone. She did indicate that she supported item five B, did not want to speak. So is this individual here or not? You are. Have it as supporting the five B. Thank you. Okay. That concludes our citizen comments, and for information, City Council has received some citizen comments by email, and each of us has a record of that. Moving on to item number four, the, oh, let's see. Yes, I did talk about executive sessions delaying number three. Moving on to item number four, consent agenda, cities, we have moved item number four D to items for individual consideration. It now becomes item five C. And so, City Secretary, when you read the consent agenda items, please make note of not to mention item four D. City Secretary, please read the consent items.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Item four A, consider the minutes from the February sixth, twenty twenty-four City Council Regular Meeting. Item four B, consider a resolution to accept the second amended Joint Chapter eleven Plan of Reorganization of Indo-International PLC and its affiliated debtors and proxy for voting on Scheme of Arrangement of Indo-International PLC and authorizing the City Manager to cast a ballot accepting the plan and appointing the chairperson as special proxy to vote in favor of the scheme at the relevant scheme meeting and any adjournment thereof and providing for an effective date. Item four C, consider a resolution to accept and deposit awarded federal and state asset forfeiture funds.
Thank you, City Secretary. Chair intended motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion to approve by Mr. Contreras, second by Mr. McBurnett. Council, please vote. Unanimously approving the consent agenda items. Item five A, I mentioned that we only were briefed, had time to take executive session items number one and two. We still have number three to do, so item five A, we delayed pending completion of item number three on executive session. Moving on to item five B, consider an ordinance of the city of Duncanville, Texas, adopting Chapter four, a Native Landscape Ordinance. And turning the floor over to Mr. Tyler Agee. Mr. Agee.
Afternoon, City Council, Mayor, City Manager. Tyler Agee, Assistant Director for Parks and Recreation and Keep Duncanville Beautiful Staff Liaison. Tonight, I just wanted to bring forth the ordinance that we've been working so hard on with the KDB Board and yourselves. We really appreciate you attending our meeting last night to finalize any changes we needed to make to get this moving along. Briefly, I'm gonna go over the changes we discussed last night that should be, should have been given to you today in your agenda packets. So the goal of this ordinance is to promote biodiversity, support native species, and enhance community and environmental health. Throughout the ordinance, we have amended the residential to residential and commercial, so that's in all zoned areas as long as they apply. All grammatical errors have been amended in section twelve sixty-seven. Now reads the schematic plan of a native landscape material permitted in this ordinance shall not be encroached, shall not encroach city-owned right-of-ways or utility easements on unimproved surface of any lot. In section twelve sixty-eight, the purpose, amended verbiage, and we've removed the list of invasive species. This will be added to the permit application that each citizen will have to submit and apply, so they'll acknowledge that when they receive it. In section twelve sixty-nine, we've amended the verbiage to include spacing of five feet to adjacent properties in section A. And in section B, we've added, based on the city's approved schematic plans. Section twelve seventy, subsection A three, it's been amended to perennials and ornamental grasses must be cut annually between December fifteenth and February fifteenth, or when above ground vegetation has died. And as mentioned, any other amendments for grammatical errors have been amended, so the two hundred and fifty dollars spelling was already fixed, so. Do you have any other updates or changes that need to be addressed before approval?
Just for information for the citizens, at the joint meeting of the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board last night and with the City Council, the changes that Mr. Agee just went through were discussed in depth by both sides, and those changes were made and approved by the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board, and that's what we see tonight in terms of what Mr. Agee has gone through. So I am very pleased to be able to say that that discussion yesterday was fruitful in terms of bringing to fruition what we believe this ordinance is supposed to be reading as tonight. So I just wanted to make that comment for everyone to know that the, what's bringing forth tonight and what Mr. Agee described as changes that were concluded last night are now effective from what we see in front of us tonight as a red line. So thank you. So let's see, any, let's see, Mr., okay. Okay. All right. I see Ms. Gooden, I see.
Mine's on too.
Gooden, Coons, McBurnett. Okay. Gooden, Coons, McBurnett. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We have got to get this fixed for you. Section twelve seventy-one, fee. Are we considering a fee, permit fee for?
I believe, as discussed last night, you all would give the City Manager jurisdiction to amend our fees, city fees, the fee schedule, and that's how we would get a set fee. I believe we mentioned twenty-five dollars, but that has not been set in stone yet, so.
Okay. So are we giving?
Mr. Hager.
City Council sets the fee, so we'll bring back, if you pass this, we'll bring back a fee resolution amendment to incorporate.
Yeah, the discussion last night was that we're gonna make that proposal, and then the fee schedule has to be changed, and fee schedule has to be changed at a later date rather than being that tonight. So yes, you are correct, we did discuss that.
Okay. And twenty-five dollars is what we decided. So I wanted to get that publicly stated, so twenty-five dollars, even though it was stated yesterday publicly. Thank you.
Mr. McBurnett.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm looking, I'm looking this.
Mr. McBurnett.
Mr. McBurnett.
Thank you. I'm just gonna make the motion to approve. Thank you.
Yes.
I have a question. This is a legal requirement. You cannot delegate to the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board the plant list. They can make a recommendation, but it has to be adopted by the City Manager. You can't delegate to the independent third body, third advisory board, they don't have any, it's just a legal issue.
Where is the language to which you refer?
It's in twelve sixty-eight.
Say again?
The way it's proposed, it says the Keep Cockville Beautiful, or Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board has the approved list. They can make a recommendation, but that approved list has to be adopted by the City Manager or the City Council, not an independent third party. You cannot delegate that responsibility to a third party. I wanna, it's just a legal requirement. So if they make the recommendation, then the manager is authorized to adopt it.
Therefore, I'll make my motion to approve.
Bend your motion, yes.
Mayor, I'm gonna second, and taking out what the City Attorney said.
Right.
And let's be clear, if you've got something to say, please say it so that I'm not accused of changing the ordinance. Tonight's the night.
So we're accept, we understand Mr. McBurnett amending his motion to include the language or include the intent of the language to delete Keep Duncanville Beautiful from this ordinance.
They'll make a recommendation, the manager will adopt the approved plant list based on their recommendation.
City Manager, love it, okay. And we have a second by Mr. Contreras.
A second and a comment to go with that, that until we actually assign a fee, if we're going to assign a fee, if this goes into effect tomorrow, we can't charge a fee.
Well, what we discussed last night was, we approved the ordinance, the actual implementation is at a later date.
Okay.
So the City Manager will decide the true implementation of it. We approved the City Manager with this ordinance being approved tonight, him taking with staff the timing of when it actually goes into effect for implementation, and that would be the charging of the fee, the receiving of the comatic and so forth.
Okay, do we know how long, when we could expect to have this on an agenda?
So the plan would be for the March fifth meeting, that we would actually have the fee back on your agenda for you to adopt at the March fifth. In the meantime, we could go ahead and start accepting applications and working with the applicants, and that way, there's no holdup.
I was just trying to see if I could get a free ride on this.
Okay.
No.
All right. I think, I don't see, the visibility on these lights is.
Mayor, I have one question while you're looking over there.
I'm sorry.
When the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board discussed the approved plant list, does that mean there's no longer an invasive plant list? So if it's not an approved plant, then you can't plant it? Is that what the understanding, I wasn't at the meeting, so I want to make sure that, because we've struck the. because we've struck the invasive plants, so that means to me that you can only plant what's on the good list. If it's not on the good list, you can't have it. And of course, we can amend the ordinance if we need to later.
The discussion last night-
I just wanna write this correctly.
Right. And the discussion last night was that including the list of invasive plants and not including the list of what the good plants are could be confusing to those individuals that want to have the landscape.
As long as it's not invasive, you can have it, but this way, it's gotta be on the approved list that's recommended for them, and if it's not on the approved list, you can't plant it.
And the invasive list is available to any citizen that wants it, we're gonna have that list available.
For the permitting, sure.
But we decided to delete that language from the ordinance.
Positive instead of negative.
Right.
Got it.
Very correct. Okay, so, help me out in terms of the lighting here. Mr. Coontz, is your light on?
Nope. I left the comments.
Okay.
So, are you, are you referring to section 1268?
Yes.
Because we just had a motion with an amendment on section 1268, and-
Yes, yes, that's the section I'm referring to.
Yeah, mine doesn't have an include or an approved plant list.
Here it is.
Your hard copy. That's not an approved plant list.
Native plant shall be limited to those use of plant materials that are approved during the application process. To find the list of approved plants, please contact, it should say, will be provided by the city manager designate as recommended by the Keep Cockbell Beautiful Board. So that means if it's not on the approv- I'm looking at what was at your place. Here, if, I'm gonna give you what I have, we're not gonna go through this again, Mr. Coontz.
I'm gonna give you what I'm reading. Says that your plan must include plants that are approved during the application process, and then I need to add in there is recommended by the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board, but it shall be provided to the city manager as designate. Not delegate government functions to a non-governmental body. And I don't have the authority under a charter ordinance to act administratively fast.
You can have your, your paper back, sir.
Oh, that's okay, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure. What you, what you were reading was something that I didn't have in front of me, so I was asking about. That's why I was asking, because it was at my place, I assumed it was at yours. Fair enough. As a matter of fact, why don't you have this one? So you do have one. So you have. Well, you, you had some notes on yours that weren't on mine, so those are handwritten notes, so I wasn't sure.
Okay.
So the city attorney has corrected, has amended Mr. McNabburnett's motion to include the language that we just heard, to make it a legal ordinance and with the recommendation of the KDB and the list of approved plants. So we have a motion to approve.
Mayor, I'm not done with my comments, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I did want to, so you know, the goal of this, promote biodiversity, support native species, not just plants, but also animals, and enhance community and environmental health, and also beautification, and so I believe that this accomplishes that, and I just wanted to thank Mr. Agee, because I know this has been a lot of work, and also wanna thank Mr. Reese and the KDB Board, because I know it's been a lot of work, and I know Reese has been back and forth on this for about two years, and so I really appreciate the work that y'all put into this, and all the, everyone who's offered input, the citizens, master naturalists, this has been a lot of work, but I think it's been worth it, so thank you very much.
With that, we have a motion as amended by Mr. McNabburnett, a second by Mr. Contreras. Counsel, please vote. Unanimously approved with Mr. Veracruz absent. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item number 5C, which was item number 4D. Item 5C is now, "Consider resolution authorizing approval of incentive grants by the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation, Prenz DCEDC, to 1703 Main Realty LLC, in an amount..."
Good evening, counsel.
Wait a minute, I lost, Jeremiah, I lost the last page. "To an amount not to exceed $209,500 for a building located at 1703 South Main Street, Duncanville, Texas, 7517, 137." Jeremiah, floor is yours, thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Jeremiah Brewer, Economic Development Coordinator. This is a incentive application for the 1703 South Main Street. The proposed improvements include engineering, landscaping, paving, a dumpster enclosure-
Mr. Brewer, I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing you, can, you pull the mic closer or something, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah. The, oh, excuse me. The proposed improvements include engineering, landscaping, paving, dumpster enclosure, paint, plumbing, maintenance, and maintenance to the fuel canopy. In regards to the comments previously made at the, that the council had made at the previous city council meeting, we have added the language directly to the resolution for the specific amounts for the payments, or for the incentive grants. As you can see, 15,000 for landscaping, 128,000 for, 128,500 for concrete paving, 37,000 for storm drain system improvements, and then 29,000 for dumpster, dumpster block wall enclosure. And also in terms with the, also, the language also added to the resolution where the, this, the payment of the incentive grants is a contingent on the submission of a, of a bona fide lease agreement from a national or regional restaurant to operate in the improved property. And we do, in this packet, have include, in this packet, we have included the, also on the presentation, the site map that had went to PNZ that was approved, and it does, if you look at the details, it does detail an 1800 square feet for the restaurant, as was also previously approved for the zoning change. And then just the other details to refresh from the previous presentation, the bids included in the packet, 810,000 for TLR, for all those improvements that were previously listed, SAR development, 878,000, and then MA design, $845,000. The current decat appraisal value is 304,000, 304,560, and then the rest of the impact evaluation, kinda details the current estimated property tax, the 740, $425.59, and then we get the number for the estimated yearly sales tax from the 4,230 square feet retail and restaurant, at 200 sales per square feet for 846,000, and then city sales tax revenue of 16,920. And then the, and then the, the owners are here, if you have any additional questions
Are you, I'm not sure if you, are you concluding or continuing, not sure where you're at, Mr. Brewer?
Oh, sorry. Then here are the pictures of the renderings, I think you had seen them previously, of Yeah, and that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions by city council members? Mr. Contreras, and then Mr. Coontz.
Thank, thank you. First reminder, because I don't believe we had the number in terms of square footage of the current restaurant space, now that we see at 1800 square feet, I think is a little bit less than you'll find a lot of regional or national chains, something we need to think about a little bit so we don't hamstring the owners from getting a viable restaurant in there that doesn't necessarily have a minimum square foot requirement that would limit the number of opportunities they have to fill this space. That's pretty small space. Just wanna remind you of that. Second thing, and let me know if this question needs to be asked at another point, but I brought this up at the last meeting, and I wanna restate it one more time. DCEDC is offering grant money in the amount of about 25% of the total projected cost that the owners are going to invest in this, and I'm not sure that we can do this contractually, the attorney will tell me, but I still feel that we're, we're given 25%, but there's no incentive or way of confirming that the owner will in fact provide the remaining 75% of the projected improvements at that property. Makes me nervous, not because I don't know these gentlemen, but anytime that we have a situation where somebody's not obligated to complete the project, we go ahead and pay our 25% portion, that amount of work gets done, there's nothing to say the rest of the work has to be done, so you could end up seeing something far less attractive than what we see in this artist's rendering. So I just wanna caution the council that that's a blank in this agreement that I'm not comfortable with.
Okay.
Mayor, just for the point of it, if you want it in there, I'll put it in there. That, that's not a problem, that they, in order to qualify to receive the money, they would have to demonstrate that they spent X number of dollars on the improvements on the property.
Okay, thank you for that, I'll wait to hear from the rest of the council on that issue.
That is something I'd like to hear some more information on as well, but I, maybe one or two questions for you, Mr. Brewer, but then maybe, because we do have the applicants here this evening, I know they weren't here last time, so I certainly would, I may have a question or two for, for the applicants. And my, my questions really had to do more with just the, the requirements of the grants, and so, and I, you know, these are a couple of questions I asked last time that really didn't get an answer to, but for example, the, the sales tax grant, you know, how, how these numbers are calculated, and it, it looks like, so I, yeah, I guess first off, I could just kinda get an explanation of, you know, the sales tax grant, and again, how those numbers are calculated and, and, you know, how we calculate our, our return on investment on, on making those grant distributions.
Okay, so the, the calculation for the sales tax, yeah, it comes from the, for the sales, city sales tax revenue, it comes from, if you look on the application on the first page, the projected, the sales growth expectations, it has year one, year two, and year three. Year one is 840,000, and from that number, we, we take the percentage tax, or the tax rate, and we multiply that to get the city sales tax revenue from those sales. And I know on the application, what's being detailed in the resolution are the specific, what was approved by the DCC board, that was for the specific incentives, but typically, we do have applicants, they, when they fill out the application, it might have the boxes checked, but what was approved is, what was directly put on the resolution that was approved by the DCC board for those specific grants.
And so the, the number that they have here, so it's $8,175 a month is the amount,
I believe those are just from the bids, but what was approved by the DCC board is
Okay, well, maybe we can come back to that one. So, and then the next one, so the business retention and expansion grant, again, it says for the, so it's 12,000 that's being requested, and so to qualify, it says businesses must prove through a bona fide incentive offer or pending lease agreement that they are seeking relocation or expansion outside of Duncanville, and so do we have those documents?
We don't have the current bona fide lease agreement for the restaurant, but the grant will be contingent on the submission of that lease agreement, so until we get that, or until we get, until they submit that to us, they won't be able to, even if they start the other improvements, the grant will not be dispersed until we have a bona fide lease agreement, and then we can bring, then we can show to council.
All right, and then, yeah, again, I appreciate the applicants being here, so I know it seemed like if we could, you know, hear from them and just hear them talk about the project and what they're looking at doing, and, and I do support this, by the way, so, but I did wanna hear from the applicant.
Well, you know what, Mr. Coontz, you said, "Let's come back to the sales tax incentive grant." Maybe we oughta just finish your discussion, your, your concerns about that one.
I mean, I guess I'm, I'm-
You wanted to come back to it, but I'm thinking maybe we oughta finish it, what do you think?
Well, I'm not, I guess I'm just not clear on how that number is calculated and what, what that number means, $8,175 a month.
Well, I guess to clarify, it was how the application was filled out, this is just, we like to preserve the application, how the applicant filled it out, but when the, the DCC board actually approved the incentive grants, that's what's actually been documented in the resolution this time. That was their initial ask, but that was not a, that was, that has not been awarded by, or that was not approved by the DCC board, but we did like to just preserve the application that they hadn't initially submitted, but it has been, and that's, those specific incentives or ask has been detailed in the resolution for those specific amounts, so the 15,000, yeah, the 15,128,500, 37,000, 29,000, which will add up to 209,500, so that is what's being asked tonight, or that was what was approved of the board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah. We already did remodeling on the C store, we spent over $250,000 on the store. We put in new walk-in coolers, new AC units, new counters, new tile, new bathroom, new electric on the, on the C store section. We have the restaurant, when we came to open it, they said you don't have enough parking space, so we purchased the land from the church for almost $120,000 for 14,000 square feet. So the church, they didn't agree to sell us bigger space so we can have more parking lot. So we already spent on the project over $450,000 between plans, remodeling the store, plus we're gonna end up spending another 120,000, 30,000 on the restaurant to remodel it. So, I don't know if any question you guys want to?
No, Ms. Gooden.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for each of you. First of all, Mr. Jeremiah, thank you so much for stepping up, doing the presentation under the conditions that we're currently faced with, and for this to be your first time that I know of. Thank you so much, and I appreciate you stepping up. Thank you so much, and I appreciate you stepping up to the plate to do so. Question, the DCEDC, they approved the application with regional restaurant at least in there, correct? So the applicant, you are aware that for the approval from DCEDC, that it is at least expected of a regional restaurant?
That's the next point I was going to talk about. As you need like a franchise restaurant, franchise restaurant over there, it's very small space. We already tried to talk to a couple franchise vendors, plus not enough space for drive-through. The problem was the church didn't allow us to buy more property so we can have the drive-through lane for the restaurant. I have over 20 calls, people they want to lease the restaurant, some of them they want to do it barbecue store, some of them they want to do it Mexican store, and I had one of my friends, he was planning to do it Mediterranean food. But because of the delay, it's been almost a year and a half since we've been back and forth, he already did his business somewhere else. But he still said if this thing go through, then he will have another location for him. Mediterranean food, it's like Lebanese, Syrian, Egyptian, you know, like shish kebab, barbecue, not barbecue, it's like, I don't know if you're familiar with the Lebanese food, hummus, tabbouleh, and rice and chicken, and it's like a gourmet food, but it's not going to be like a big-name restaurant.
But does he have more restaurants?
He has one right now, and that's the only one he has. And that's his second location gonna be if everything went through.
Well, thank you for providing that. My concern is this is, as stated in the last meeting, this is one of our entrance into us, into our city, a gateway. On the other side, we have national chain restaurants, and we would like to continue, I, let me speak for me, I would like to see a regional or national chain restaurant in there simply because it is the entrance into our city, and we have a field house that's right across the street from it. And according to the schematics and according to DCEDC's approval of your application, that was one of the stipulations. And I would like to stay in line with that. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. One of the things, I don't know, Mr. Brewer, if Mr. Ossee was briefed on some of the comments that we had during the last time this came before us, but in going back to Councilmember Gooden's comments, that we're looking for a regional chain. We were hoping that that would have a name brand on it, as you said, it would be a franchise. From what you just said, I'm not getting a feeling that you have yet identified a regional restaurant. Not that you have to, just as you need to understand that what we're talking about here is-
Yeah.
The city would like to see a regional name in there.
To be honest with you, we didn't like push to find a regional restaurant because we weren't sure how's the project gonna go. And at the same time, the people from the economic developments, they had some ideas to do like, what do you call it? Like to do it like a general kitchen for events and trucks or stuff like that in that area. So that's why we didn't proceed with the regional restaurant, because we don't know how's the situation gonna go with the grant and all these things.
But we, the last time we discussed this, this council agreed that whatever restaurant would go in there would be a regional name restaurant.
Right.
So despite history, despite what DCEDC did, this council is asking for a regional name. So if we can get assurances from, you know, at a station, signing an agreement and so forth, is what Mr. Coons referenced in terms of the, the application itself, we need assurances that what we desire is a regional name franchise in there. You don't need to provide it to us tonight, but we need some assurances and understanding going forward that that's what you will pursue.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see, Mr., oh, Ms. Cherry, Cherry Brown.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. This actually is in my district, and I got a couple of questions. So how long have, have you been there, your business, how long has it been there?
Well, we bought it when, in 2020 or '21, when the Corona.
Okay.
But the store was closed for six months. We, we bought it, we did the remodeling for the store, and when we tried to remodeling for the restaurant, to open it, they stopped us because they said you don't have enough parking. So we opened the C store, and we've been working to get the restaurant going.
Okay. So, so thank you for choosing Duncanville to want to do a business. Like Councilmember Gooden said, it is, you know, gateway to the city and right across from the field house. I'm in favor of whatever we can do to enhance, because it's right off of the expressway. I'm saying as far as being able to have a great-looking building, a parking lot, and I'm, no, no, I'm saying you're rendering, everything looks great. So I'm, I'm glad to see that. I'm one that believes building, they will come. I think, well, he left. I was gonna say, I think the final decision, whatever business is coming there, it's us anyway, so.
Do you consider Steak 'n Shake as franchise restaurant? Okay. I have, one of my partners, he has Steak 'n Shake. I'll just bring them over, let them do the study on that location, then we go from there. We talked to Taco Casa, but Taco Casa said no because there's another one-
Cockro Hill.
It has to be like 10 miles away. We have two Taco, two Taco Casa, we have two Sonics. So Steak 'n Shake, I might be able to bring it to the table.
Thank you.
Going back to Mr. Coons.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to echo what Ms. Cherry Brown just said, because this, I mean, all these grants are really, we're talking about what kind of restaurant we want, but all these grants are really about beautification and enhancement of the area, right? What's, I mean, that's, you know, signage, pavement grants, landscape, paint. So it's really about making that business, whatever it is there, look better so that when people are coming through town, I, I mean, frankly, I'd like to see a Mediterranean restaurant, but, you know, that's me. But, I mean, that's kind of the whole idea behind these economic incentive grants, is that you make it look better, and then it will be more attractive to, you know, any, you know, restaurants that might want to be put there. And so, I mean, kind of, so all that's kind of beside the point for me as far as what, what we're looking at this evening. And I just had one other question, so on the signage grant, so could, would you mind going back, please, to the renderings? Or first go back to the, so that, yeah, there's a rendering.
Okay. The signage right now, it's not the golf, because we don't have a contract with any jobber. But we're waiting to see how's the whole package gonna be. I have to represent it to the jobber so we can do that golf image. Because we already put in new pumps, a new POS system, so we have two, three jobbers that talking to us, but we're kind of putting everything on hold till we see how's the situation gonna go.
So the amount that's requested here, I mean, that's, so that's just kind of a ballpark amount, if you're not sure exactly.
I'm sorry?
So that the amount that you're requesting here for $80,000, that's just sort of a ballpark amount, it's kind of an estimate?
The $8,000?
Eighty thousand for the signage grant.
No, we're not asking for the signage, we're asking for the parking lot, isn't it?
Oh. Yeah, it's, what was, what was approved by DCEDC at the board, at their board meeting is the $15,000 for the concrete paving, $128,500 for the storm drain system improvements, $37,000 for a, $37,000 for, what is it?
I mean, drainage.
Yeah, for the drain, and then $29,000 for dumpster block wall enclosure.
Yeah, I think, I think what's happening is that we're, we're looking at the application, and I'm going along with Mr. Coons, I'm following exactly what he's doing. Where he's going line by line in terms of the application, and then Mr. Finch pointed out, going away from, just a minute, going away from the application and going to the actual ordinance or the grant that we're actually gonna be signing, it's different than, than what we see in the application. So probably to our benefit, let me read where, that particular paragraph to get it so that we all come on the same playing field here. So the DCE board has firmly approved an application of incentive grants for $15,000 for concrete paving, I'm sorry, landscaping not to exceed $15,000, concrete paving in amount not to exceed $128,500, a storm drain system improvement is not to exceed $37,000, and the installation of a dumpster block enclosure in amount not to exceed $29,000 from incentive grant totaling $209,500. And these payments of incentive grants contingent on submission of bona fide lease agreement from a national or regional, there it is, regional restaurant to operate and improve property. So it's, we're dissecting the application and not applying the dissection of the application to what we're looking at for approval tonight. So when we put that into perspective, I think we're gonna be okay. Okay. One question I have, going back to Mr. Contreras's concern for Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Ossee has already said that they have spent in excess of $450,000 on the, on the facility itself today. Mr. Contreras, do you consider that $450,000 already expended as going toward the $800 and some thousand dollars that he's asking for?
I believe so. I'm looking at the, the proposal dated 10/12/23, which includes everything from permit fees to encore, to site work, concrete work, masonry, paint, plumbing, electrical. So it's a, it's hard to decipher from what, what the gentleman's explained, he's already done versus this, but it looks like they're, they have done work towards this schedule of work here.
Right. They've already done in excess of 50% of the work that we're anticipating being in total. So that's why I don't judge your concern.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Because Mr. Hager said we can amend it, I'm not so sure we need to do that based on what Mr. Ossee said already about the $450,000 that he's already invested in the activity.
Well, if I could, I would just ask the question that, do you anticipate investing the estimated amount of $810,000? That's including the $209,000 that you're getting in a grant?
Yes, plus we, because the total list here is gonna cost about $480,000.
Sir, could you speak in the mic, please? Thank you.
The total cost of the parking lot, it's gonna end up costing about $480,000. The grant is for two-
$209.
Yeah, and then we're gonna pay the rest. Plus, we're gonna remodel the restaurant.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Coons.
I just need to know, is, you're gonna require in order to give this grant an additional investment by the applicant?
Well, that's why I asked, Mr. Contreras made that concern noted, and that's why I went back to him to say, does he still have that concern based on what's already been expended? So if, Mr. Contreras, if you're-
Okay.
If you're okay with what's happened, then we will not need to amend it to include that kind of language for Mr., for Mr. Hager. But we can.
No, I, I don't feel that it's necessary at this point. I'm going to just trust that we can, we can get the work that's been promised done.
Okay. So what we have before us then is a resolution, as stated, now cheerleading, ten motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have motion to approve by Mr. Coons, the second by Councilmember Gooden. Please vote. Unanimously approved, Mr. Vera Cruz absent. Thank you, Mr. Ossee, for investing in our community, and as has been said, you have a gateway activity to our city. We're looking forward to seeing it beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our items for individual consideration. We move on to item number six, staff and board reports. Item number six A, received the monthly finance report as of December 31st of 2023. Ms. Odie, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy to be with you tonight. So have the pleasure of giving you the December, financial report as of the end of December. So this is the third month out of the fiscal year, so that would put us at a benchmark of 25%. That is the number to kind of compare things against. So giving you this all fund summary here of our revenues, we've collected $19.3 million to date. Again, just, you've heard it a few times the last couple of reports, so, so at the previous year, we had received the second batch of the ARPA funding, so that's why 23 is an anomaly and higher than the previous years. Year-to-date interest income we've received is $980,000. Again, want to applaud our good work of our financial advisors as we've been aggressively investing in the market. So our actual revenue to date is 23.3%. On the expense side of the house, we have spent $17.9 million to date. Again, that benchmark being 25%, we are trending below at 15.8%. So property and sales tax, property tax again is, that's 50% of our general fund revenue budget. We start receiving the payments that come in November, December, January, that's the bulk of the time that we start collecting the tax. So in, in the month of December, sorry, that should have been changed to December, but in December, we received $10.2 million, so we've said, we have received $10.3 million to date. That's 43% of our tax revenue budget. On the sales tax side, again, we receive payments two years in arrears, meaning what we collected for the month of October, yeah, two months, did I say, sorry, two years, two months? Two months in arrears, what we got paid for October, we received the payment in December. So for one payment out of the year so far, we're trending at 2.92% over the same time period last year. And just to give you again that regional snapshot, this doesn't mean much yet into the year, as this is only one month out of 12, but so you can see how we compare growth-wise in the regional area. So general fund, so again, property tax revenue coming in, sales tax collected two months behind, we've received $12.53 million to date, $596,000 in interest income, so we've received actually 31, 31.6% to date. On the expense side, our actual expenses are at 18.3%, again, under that benchmark of 25%, and it's mainly the payroll, salary, and benefits. To give you that table view, as you can see, it's the same information, but this just shows you how the different categories break down and how they compare to the previous year as well. So last year, at this time, we had received 34%, we're, we're at 31%, so we're about in line. And just to give you kind of where we're at, like from a cash fund balance standpoint, this number's gonna continue to fluctuate until we finalize the FY23 audit. So those numbers, we're gonna continue to fluctuate as we're getting more revenue versus what we're expending at this point in the year. Moving on to the utility funds, we have received $3.9 million to date, so that's 18% of the budget. We're gonna continue to trend like one month behind with the utility fund because we always have one month that gets backdated to the previous year. So by the end of the fiscal year, we'll have caught up, our expenditures are at 14%. And I wanted to revisit this chart, so what I had presented before in the past, you know, in terms of the, our health of our infrastructure and our meteries and, and kind of that loss ratio there, we were using pumped, number of pumped gallons, but we went back to it and wanted to compare what we actually billed to customers versus what Dallas Water Utilities actually billed to us, which gives us a little bit of a different picture. So on the average for the last 12 months, it's about 17.8% is the unbilled loss for water. And to give you kind of a gauge, in the report itself, I described it as, so the Texas Water Board gives a standard about 10%. Anything above that usually indicates that there is some kind of infrastructure, you know, need, leaks, metering issues, things like that. So it's to give you a gauge of what we're trying to compare ourselves to, 10% is about that industry average. So we'll just keep showing you this so you can just, again, see the importance of our infrastructure and keeping that up to date. So, we'll just keep showing you this so you can just, again, see, um, the importance of our, uh, infrastructure and keeping that up to date. And again, just the, kind of the table view here of the utility fund. And then the, the cash balance, the fund summary there, again, that's going to continue to fluctuate as we go throughout the year. And then just some other fun highlights, some of this will seem kind of repetitive, as I've mentioned it before in the previous months, just some of these, uh, different funds that you'll see some anomalies where they are trending ahead of the twenty-five percent. So, again, hotel motel tax, we paid out some grants, um, variety of grants, so we've spent thirty-six point two percent to date. Um, on our comprehensive liability insurance, again, we pay our annual insurance premium, that's due October one, so the bulk of that payment, um, that expense has already been made. And the fleet replacement, again, this is based on timing of when we actually pay for the, uh, fleet that we purchased, so we're at fifty-three percent of the budget. And then just some capital improvement project highlights, we know fire station, you know, is, is wrapping up, um, Swan Ridge is wrapping up. And then we know Armstrong Park, um, is wrapping up too and will be available this spring. Any questions?
Uh, yes, I, actually, it's a question for our city manager. And, Mr. City Manager, under your responsibility coming onboard, that goes to the fund balances in terms of the days of operating expenses. Uh, what is your perspective on the number of days versus what we've been doing in the past?
Generally speaking, a, a general rule is if you, you had two to three months' worth of expenses in fund balance, that's a pretty good, uh, average if you want to look at it like that. Um, and so, you know, we still have a healthy fund balance, uh, that we're able to invest and take advantage of some of the interest rates that are going on right now. Um, we, as we get into budget season, we're really going to have to, um, fine-tune some of the, the fiscal projections and where we're going, especially with some of the capital projects. Um, Ms. Otte mentioned the water loss, um, you know, the Public Works Department has been providing me with a lot of information, and I'm working with a, an entity to really, um, talk about. I know one of the council's priorities was the AMI, and, uh, they're, they're working on some analysis for me right now that we can bring back hopefully to you in the very near future. Uh, because we are, we are losing some money, um, on, with water loss. And, uh, you know, there, there's a way, and I know that the residents, even from the district meetings that we've been having, the neighborhood meetings, the residents are asking for AMI too. If they've got leaking sprinklers and those types of things. So, I've kind of gone a long way around about your question.
You have.
I have. Um, but there, there's a whole variety of pieces to this puzzle that we're currently working on. So, in terms of the fund balance, you know, I, I think we're in pretty good shape right now. I think we're, what, ten, fifteen percent, give or take, I think, is, uh, off the top of my head, is that ballpark, ballpark?
Fifteen percent would be your minimum.
Right, yeah.
What you want to have.
Correct. And then normally, it, when you're talking two to three months, you know, twenty-five, thirty percent, that's a, that's a more realistic, I think, of, uh, a healthy fund balance, especially for those investments somewhere we're at, so.
Okay, and I was just looking for your perspective on our future in terms of the budgeting process for a number of, uh, days of operating expenses in the fund balance. Okay, any other questions for Ms. Odie? Oh, Ms. Gooden, yes.
Thank you. Could you go to the last page, page, please? Um, fleet replacement expenses, we're currently at fifty-three point three percent. Do we anticipate, um, not going over budget for the remainder of the year or?
Well, we'll certainly, you know, look closer to that, obviously, these are, uh, a lot, a lot of purchase, you know, all at once. Um, and the timing of this is not going to be consistent with, you know, the pace of any of your other operations, it really just depends. Um, but at this point, uh, we're not expected to go over, but we are trying to aggressively, you know, replace things and getting those things moving a lot faster too. So, as we continue to look at that, yes, we will definitely come to you if we're needing to do different.
Based on our needs?
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if I could just real quick, Mayor, so, uh, specifically the police department, you know, uh, the chief had a meeting today and we were able to meet with the entire, uh, police force. And about half of our vehicles are non-operational currently, and so there's definitely some needs in terms of police fleet vehicles. Um, so hopefully, as, uh, some of those repairs are being made and those can come back online, but, uh, that may be something that we may have to bring back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Odie? Thank you, appreciate it very much. A lot of detail, then we do know that it's a lot of work that goes into that overview. Thank you very much. No, no, okay, I'm just checking.
Yeah, no, could you go back? I just wanted to see if I saw something wrong or the fire station, eight point nine million spent to date?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's, that's how, how much we have spent as of, um, again, this is out of December, you know, report, so eight point nine is what has gone out the door.
Yeah, so what do we estimate that, if you indulge me a quick second, Mayor, I think we, we have contracts that are still, expenses still to come.
Yes, absolutely, so we're mostly done with the architecture, you know, and we still have some more payments coming for the core construction that's the, you know, actually built the building, but we have all the other ancillaries, the, you know, the IT-related things, the furniture, moving costs, all those things. Um, still get factored into the total cost of that building, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Yeah, thanks, so. Uh, moving on to item number six B, police quarterly report, interim police chief Stogner, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. As you can see, obviously, this is for, um, October to November, or I'm sorry, to December. So, I'm going to actually update you on the update, um, to kind of get you up to speed on everything that we've done. Um, so, beginning, uh, we'll talk about our personnel and staffing. Um, so Officers Garcia and Vasquez, um, they're on the left. Um, they were in their third phase of training, uh, when this quarter was being, being done. Um, they have since graduated field training and currently on their own in patrol. In fact, today is their two-year anniversary, so it's pretty fitting that we're having this conversation now. I mean, they're doing really well, um, in patrol too, as expected. Um, Officers Crosby and Gomez, Officer Crosby actually resigned, um, recently, um, and Officer Gomez is close to completing his field training. As stated at the bottom, we had a, um, our civil service test on the tenth. Um, that test, we had thirty people show up, we had twenty-four pass the written test, uh, twenty-two passed our physical agility test, which is a two-thousand-meter row. And we have an active list of twenty-two, uh, we have since started our backgrounds and we've already rejected eight off that list, so we have a list of fourteen to hire ten. Uh, that's, we're just not going to do that with a list of fourteen. We'll be lucky to get one or two off this list. Um, and the majority of the rejections were drug usage or criminal activity that we just can't ignore, obviously, so.
Uh, Chief, before you go on.
Sure.
Just an observation, but bringing up, looking at Garcia and Vasquez and so forth. I observed last week, one of our patrol vehicles with two individuals, but most of the time I see them with only one individual, one officer. Is there something because of maybe lack of vehicles, or is there something going on with duty shifts, that there was two? Is it normally just one individual, one officer per vehicle, or did I see an anomaly with two?
It, it is normally one. Uh, now, we give the patrol shifts the autonomy to, to add, to write a partner if they need to. But more than likely, you saw Officer Gomez training with his field training officer.
Okay.
Um, if I had to guess, we just don't have the personnel to have too many two-person elements at that point.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Um, staff development, uh, obviously, it's very, I'm very passionate on developing our staff. Uh, one of the things that we did, and we're always looking for options to help our officers, um, deal with combative subjects. And one of the things that we looked at was this Gracie School of Jiu-Jitsu. Um, and what that is, the majority of our altercations, whenever we deal with somebody who's combative, it normally goes to the ground. And all this is, is giving that officer an option to safely, uh, defuse this incident and put this person into custody. Um, as you can see, it says it's, uh, due to its de-escalation culture, sound decision-making and the specific tactics deployed during an active assault. Um, in addition to that, detectives attended the annual Texas Association of Vehicle Theft Investigators Conference. Um, that enables them to stay abreast of new trends on, uh, vehicles being stolen. Um, and then we hold our annual qualifications for our firearms around October, and we had no issues with that either. So, from there, we have our care team, um, you guys have, um, obviously, no Officer Hernandez. Um, he does a really great job on, um, highlighting, uh, what he does in our city. In fact, uh, through October to December, he's, um, has thirty-nine new clients, six voluntary assessments, and then twenty-three actively engaged clients, which is important. Because that's twenty-three people that we're not having to respond on, uh, police officers continuously. So, it helps certainly our response when, whenever we have an officer who deals with this, with his expertise. Um, this is our patrol activity, um, at a glance. You can see that our calls of service went down, uh, from twenty-two to twenty-three. Normally, when that happens, as you can see here, it's a perfect example, um, our self-initiated activity tends to go up because they're not answering. Well, they're answering less calls, which means they have more time to do more self-initiated stuff, which, as you can tell, they, um, issued additional citations or more from the previous year. Our top five cited violations were no insurance, no driver's license, speeding, expired registration, and ran the stop sign. So, the next thing that we have is a great program, it's our BMV program that our citizens on patrol conduct. Um, obviously, education is a key for us to help reduce, uh, not eradicate, but reduce BMVs, and this is a great program. Um, as you can see, Winco, um, had a ninety-five percent pass rate, so education's helping. Um, so that's the three locations that we did, uh, through October through December, it's Costco, Winco and Cash Saver. Yes?
Uh, what, what's, what's participation like in that program right now?
From our COPs, it's really good. It, it's, in fact, I believe they're doing one here soon. Um, I, I spoke with the CPA, um, um, association, and they were discussing on going out and doing a, another one. Now, there, there was a comment, occasionally you'll get into a, uh, not an altercation, but a discussion with maybe a person who owns that vehicle that these COPs are looking into, wondering what they're doing. But, but as you can see in that top right picture, they're, they're clearly identified on, on what they're doing and who they are. Um, it's just, I understand people don't want people looking into their cars.
And I guess as far as the number of volunteers for the COP program in general, how is that looking?
It, it's actually really good. Um, you know, we, as far as how many show up for this.
No, I mean, for, for the whole program, so.
Total program, we have, I'm not sure of the total number, but we have, I would say probably sixty, seventy total in the CPA.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm asking about just, yeah, just COP in, in general.
Mm-hmm.
Because you're citizens, they have to go through a course, right?
They do, yes.
And I guess, you know, uh, do we have a lot of enrollment in?
So, we, we haven't lately, which, plus we had some budget issues, so we've reduced our COP classes to one a year, and it's in the fall now. Um, I know Officer Arias, um, is trying to get a Hispanic CPA, um, Spanish-speaking only. Um, but the problem is, is the instructors just aren't bilingual that, that do these classes, but we're working on getting that, uh, adopted as well. Um, so for the most part, we have probably anywhere from ten to fifteen show up on these COP classes.
Thank you.
You bet. Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Mr. Contreras, did you have your comment? Okay.
Um, so, the other thing between October and December, uh, we had four use-of-force incidents, uh, zero vehicle pursues and four complaints. And I'll update, um, this because, um, all the use-of-force reports, um, have been approved and within department policy, and all of the complaints have finally been dispositioned. So, everything's up to date now, it's not still pending any approval at this point. Uh, again, this is October through December. So, our community engagements, um, since this is over the holiday season, I'll really highlight the Santa Cop program that we have. Um, the Santa Cop program provides gifts, um, to, uh, deserving families. And this year, we were able to provide forty different families, uh, with toys. Um, in addition to that, um, we were able to give a local church, um, a assortment of toys for their missionary trip, uh, that they did down in South Texas. And then finally, um, we delivered approximately two hundred gifts to the seniors at, at nursing homes. Um, so I think that's a, a great outreach from, from Officer Arias. She highlights this and does a really good job on, uh, ensuring that we're out there in the community. So, going into our neighbors, Group A offenses, um, I'll let you guys kind of skim this, um, of what's occurred, unfounded action, and what we've been able to clear. And then Group A offenses, we'll, we'll get to the next slide that's got the comparison of other cities as well. Um, so the Group A offenses are all of these here. So, obviously, the yellow is October, greens November, and blues December. So, going into the major crimes for different, uh, council districts, uh, October, um, you have District One, Two, Three, Four and Five. Um, obviously, um, you have a corridor issue with a lot of our motor vehicle thefts. I'll tell you, um, we have some strategic cameras placed now to hopefully, um, help with the reduction of this. Uh, they came online around this time, uh, so I'm hopeful that we'll start seeing more of a reduction on some of these crimes, uh, because of these cameras. But you have November. And then finally, December. And then if you have any questions.
Uh, yes, Mr. Contreras.
Thank you.
Of course.
Going back to the, um, the care program.
Okay.
I know, uh, last year we talked about it and it seemed like they were possibly going to be defunded. Are we, do we know where we stand today with this?
Yes, so from what I understand, um, the grant funding's going to, um, expire, I believe, in March or April. I believe we discussed this in a council meeting, at least former, uh, Chief LaVigne, you guys decided to move forward with funding it out of our general budget, the remainder of the fiscal year.
Okay, but that would be, um, us alone, or would that be in conjunction with the other cities participating?
I, I can't for sure say, but I believe Cedar Hill is looking at pulling their officer from this regional group. Um, I don't want to say that for sure, but I, I have heard that. Um, DeSoto, obviously, will still maintain their people there, and I believe there's some other smaller agencies involved. I'm not sure about, uh, whether or not they're going to remain in this program.
Well, I think the numbers that you showed us tonight, um, support that there is a need, and it does provide, uh, a, an alternative to maybe more forceful actions and pulling officers, uh, away from other, uh, deals. And, uh, Officer Hernandez has done an outstanding job by all indications, so I hope we can continue to, uh, fund this program.
Absolutely.
Uh, Ms. Gooden.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, could we go back to the comparison page?
Would it be?
Where we at right there?
Hmm, sure.
So, I know that, um, the compared cities have a higher cit, a higher, uh, population. So, is it possible, this is just a suggestion, um, is it possible to see this in percentage breakdown compared to population? So, that way, for me, it's a more, um.
I'll have to look at it and see.
If not, that's.
Um, I can only extrapolate the data from this neighbors group.
Okay.
I can look and see if that's maybe a possibility.
Okay, and like I said, it's not a necessity, but I just thought about it, suggesting it. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Kuntz.
Thank you. So, this is kind of related to personnel, maybe staffing, but might be more of a, just kind of a broad question.
Okay.
When we talk about hiring.
Yes.
And retention, so do we, do our officers currently have any kind of, like, peer support program?
Absolutely. So Sergeant McCarthy leads that effort. He is extremely passionate about that. He is our subject matter expert. If we have a critical incident, or if somebody wants to reach out just to talk to somebody, it's one hundred percent anonymous, and they have that opportunity. They know who to call.
And that's, that's within the, within the department, right?
That is, yes. It's a resiliency group is what we use.
Okay, good. So I'm glad to hear that. And then what kind of programming do we have to kind of support mental health, physical health for, for officers?
So?
Is that within, within the department itself?
It, it is. So as, as far as physical health, I will tell you this. We don't have a workout facility in our station. Speaking about, since we already discussed asset forfeiture stuff, I've approved our officers to go out and figure out what we need, and we would pay for it out of asset forfeiture, and then house it in our Sallyport. Yeah, so it'll give them the opportunity. I will say this, that every officer has an hour on their shift that they can get in their workout clothes and go work out for that hour and come out. And it's, and it's a paid time. It's something that the city, I'm not sure which city manager allowed us to do that, but it's great. As far as the mental aspect of it, you have, I think the companion officers that we have that you can talk to, and it's meant to be anonymous. I don't even know about this, and I don't want to know about it. So we have those tenants in our police department. We're looking at adding more as we progress.
Thank you. And then just, I had one other question because this was brought up, and, you know, I know one day I was driving through our neighborhood, and I was approaching, the street I was on was perpendicular to an alley. And I had to slam down on my brakes because a kid flew out in front of me on a four-wheeler, you know, went flying, turned around. And so I guess, you know, do we, you know, do we get a lot of calls? Do we get? And when the calls are made, I guess, kind of what's, what's the protocol as far as what, I mean, what the department can do in those instances? I mean, I, I called once and actually, from a distance, kind of followed the guy around. I was kind of waiting.
Sure.
You know, for someone to show up. And so, you know, you know, there's a couple of questions in there, but, you know, how often do we get calls? And, you know, what can the department do when they get those calls?
On the, on the ATVs in the roadways?
Four-wheelers, yes.
So I'm not sure how many calls we've had since, I guess, the previous time we've had to deal with this.
I guess it maybe, might be how many reports are actually made?
Uh, that I don't know either, without looking into it. I will say this. When we receive a call for service, it, it's categorized by priority. And obviously, if you're dealing with a major disturbance, or that's holding, that's going to be priority over anything else below that, if it's an ATV or something to that effect. So it really depends on how busy the officers are in regards to our response time to that area. And a lot of times when we get there, these, these ATVs are gone. We don't see them. We have to see them, or the, the, the person, if they can give us some, some good information on, hey, this is what it looks like. Maybe we can track it down at that point. But it's something, I, I did hear the, the citizen comments. I made notes of it. I'm going to look into it tomorrow and get with our personnel to figure out exactly how many of these calls we had and what we can do to hopefully put a stop to it. Because it seemed like we did. There was a time when we caught them, we sighted them, and it was done, and it seems like it's coming back, uh, coming back up again.
I appreciate anything and everything that y'all are doing.
Sure, absolutely.
Obviously, it's something that probably not going to eradicate, but, you know, if there's anything that y'all are doing to discourage.
Well, and a lot of times, these, these kids run from us, too.
Yeah.
And that's the last thing we want to do is these kids get hurt from running from us.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Same though, comments, questions? Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I'm sorry, what?
I'm going to say something real quick, Mr. Mayor, yeah, thank you. Chief Stogner, I appreciate what the Duncanville Police Department does. I know the last couple of months have been real.
Rough?
Yeah, and stuff, but you've, y'all have responded, and, and you keep the, the character of the department and what law enforcement should be. So thank you.
Well, and I'll give you guys one, one thing that, that happened recently. Our officers went to a person with a gun to his head recently and talked him down and took him to go get help. So it's a testament to the people that work in this police department and the passion that they have for helping people. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on to item six C, receive the fiscal year 2023, 2024 first quarter investment report as of December 31st of 2023. Hawkins floor is yours. We lost sound all of a sudden.
Testing.
Got it, okay.
Good evening, Council Mayor. We're here to, to present the first quarter investment report for fiscal year twenty-four, and I have here Mr. Tenpinyan, who is from our investment group, Valley View. I will give him the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to see everyone. So, yeah, here to, here to present the first quarter investment report to you. Yep. So the first page is just a comparison of the portfolio balance. And so, as was discussed earlier during the financial presentation, first quarter of the year is a good year financially because you've got the property taxes coming in. So this is very typical to see those balances increase, which they did. We've highlighted the investment return on the portfolio, which is five point two six percent. We like to measure that against a couple of benchmarks, being the, the three-month Treasury Bill, the six-month Treasury Bill, and tax pool. And so very close to those. So again, we've had still a very rapidly rising interest rate environment. It is starting to stabilize a little bit, so we expect that you'll see that number close in to where it's in line with those benchmark totals. The interest income for the first quarter, close to a million dollars at nine hundred sixty-eight thousand, six fourteen. On that earned on the seventy-nine point nine million. And then just to look at a, at the yield curve, gives us kind of an indication of what the market is anticipating for interest rates in the future. And the interesting thing on this one is the, the red line and the blue line are December, separated by one year, December of twenty-three versus December of twenty-two. And other than the short-term rates, you see they're almost identical. So it kind of rose up for a little bit. It came back to where it is now, but on the, the overnight rates are where that difference is is noticed because the rates are around four and a half percent previous year. Now they're around five and a quarter to five and a half. So you see that on the short end, but longer term, there's an expectation that rates are going to start to come back down at some point, more around the four percent rate from where they are right now. This was kind of an interesting slide to look at, just because this is what the, you know, the experts are expecting. And it's interesting to see how it changes from quarter to quarter. So three months ago, the, the common thought was rates are going to begin to decline in March of this year, and that by the end of 2024, we're going to be close to four percent on the overnight rates. So moving from our current rate of around five and a quarter to five and a half, expectations were we were going to go down to four percent. There were some inflation numbers that came out last week that were higher than what the Fed was hoping to see. And that kind of pushed this back. So when you go to the next slide now, what's expected is rather than a cut in March, now they're saying maybe May or June is when the first cut would take place. And they're still thinking that we'll get down to four percent by January of twenty-five. So in general, kind of still going in the same direction, but the, just the stubbornness of getting inflation down has kind of put a pause on seeing rates come down a little bit lower. And then here are just a couple of key economic data points. So again, Fed funds expected to stay in the current range. In some ways, that's nice. Stability is good. The market likes stability. Employment remains strong, so that's really allowed the Fed to keep the rates higher. January reports, there were, we added three hundred and fifty-three thousand, and what was expected was a hundred and eighty thousand. So quite a bit higher than that. And unemployment rate's at three point seven percent, so that's still a good unemployment rate. Housing is kind of a mixed story. The thirty-year mortgage rate is six point six three, so that's having an impact on buyers, obviously. Existing homes, it's interesting, the median price has gone up year over year, four point four percent. And there's kind of a shortage of inventory. And if you think about it, if you're in a house with a three percent mortgage and you're a little reluctant to sell, if you're going to be buying a house, and now your interest rate is double what it was before, so you're less likely to sell. So that's kind of causing the prices of existing homes to go up. Interesting, new homes, their median price is down fourteen percent year over year. So again, that's that impact of those higher mortgage rates. It is having an impact on the cost of, of new homes. GDP has remained really strong, even with the higher interest rates. So the fourth quarter, they thought it would come in at two percent, and so the advanced estimate that was fourth quarter came in at three point three. So it's one of those things where the market in a lot of places looks good. That allows the Fed to keep the rates up and not feel like they've got to lower rates quickly to stimulate the economy, at least not yet. And then inflation does continue to be a little bit stubborn. It's still at three point four percent year over year. The target is two percent, so it's about, still, yeah, still significantly higher than what they want. Core CPI, which is where you take out food and energy, three point nine percent. Looking at the city's portfolio, so right now, twenty-four percent of the portfolio is in CDs. And you can see on the, the bar chart on the right, those are invested in thirty, in the thirty-to-ninety-day timeframe. And then you see the amount that's invested ninety-two hundred and eighty days. Right now, the, the city is keeping its very short-term investments, a lot of overnight and liquid funds, which you're really not giving up anything right now interest-wise, because the little shorter end is where the rates are higher. In time, it will probably be good to begin to transition some of the funds out further on the ladder to lock up rates. And then this is a look at how the city's portfolio is done against tax pool and the rolling three-month. And so the blue line is the city's average. Most of the time, we've been able to maintain the, a return higher than those yields. But again, in a quickly rising, rising interest rate environment, you, you just, you, you tend to trail during that period. But then you want to set up so that when they do come back down, once again, you're staying ahead of those, those benchmark rates. A couple of things on aspects as far as what's in the portfolio. I know there's one thing that stood out on the top part. Those are the liquid funds, the kind of above that break. So Denise was talking with me just before we came in here. And so with some of the changes and signers and everything, that has been lined up. So funds are going to move out of prosperity at three percent. Those will be reallocated into some of the higher rates. So that'll help the city earn a higher rate there. You had a couple of CDs that were a little bit lower. I mean, were amazingly at rates above five percent now. So you had a, a couple of CDs, three CDs that were below five percent. One of those matured last month in January on the seventeenth. And then you've got two more that are maturing in April. So those will come off. Those will likely be replaced with higher-earning investments. So that'll also help the city's portfolio return, rate of return come up. And then this is, it's kind of an interesting environment to be investing in normally. You've got an upward-sloping yield curve, so that if you've got funds to invest out, you want to put it out at kind of at that two-year period and just kind of build that ladder. But right now, you're giving up yield by going out longer. So the six-month range, the, the best rates are on five and a half percent of what we're seeing on competitive CDs. At twelve months, you're at five point one percent. Eighteen months, you're locking out that up the rate longer, but it's at four point six two. And at that point, the banks are starting to pull back. They don't really want to go past a year. So we're looking at US Treasury and US agency, government agencies to invest in. So you can kind of see the, the quandary there. It's like how much you give up yield, but you lock up. And so there are some things we can do to kind of look at different scenarios, depending on how quickly the Fed drops rates, to look at what's the best balance to go between, you know, tying up some funds for longer term, but then keeping some funds shorter and just going ahead and capturing the higher short-term rates that are available. So that's, that's a snapshot of the, the city's first quarter. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple for you.
Sure.
Go back, I think it's seventy-four.
Yeah.
So keep going. The slide where you showed we earned nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in interest, was that your very, there, right?
Yes.
That one right there.
Yes.
So trying to relate that number in terms of quarterly interest income, and then relating that to the slide where you showed the, the liquid investments, how much of that nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand is coming from the liquid investments? And I'm thinking of, a liquid investments means that's corporate, like corporate liquidity. If we needed to pull those, we could? In terms of looking at the city manager determining budget for, for twenty-four, twenty-five, the liquidity availability of those funds that are, what you consider to be liquid versus the others?
Yeah, that's, and this is probably?
Is there any way to determine, do you know right offhand of that nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, how much came out of those liquid accounts? Yeah, yeah, those right there at the top of the chart.
Yeah, so you can tell the top half, I could maybe ballpark it, just kind of looking at it. So you've got fifty, fifty-one, fifty-eight, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, close to sixty. So the majority of the funds are what we call liquid, which means immediately, you know, immediately available on a daily basis. So sixty of your seventy-nine million, let me find the pie chart, too. That's going to be a good. So this is really a good chart. So what's in green, those, that's, those are your immediately available funds.
Okay.
And what's in blue, those are invested, and they're not out for a real long time. Their, their longest investments are going out six months right now. So the majority of your funds, seventy-six percent of your funds, you've got daily access to right now.
But you're not saying that the, the par value is synonymous with the interest income?
And?
Go back.
To, let's see, I think we were up. I went the wrong way. Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, you showed that.
There, right here?
Okay. So, yeah, you just did the, the mental math on this one, coming up with the par value. But I was looking at how much of the par value would generated that nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in interest?
So, so they're all earning interest, and it accrues monthly. And so, but I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
Well, I guess what's rolling around the back of this computer is how much of that money can we put our hands on if we really needed it? Of that nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand interest?
Seventy-six percent of it you can put your hands on right now.
The top half is all liquid.
Right, I understand that. But I'm trying to relate the par value to the interest income that these, that these, that these generated for us in terms of grabbing the interest and the possible par value for the use in the budget.
Yeah. So, and the, the par value, one nice thing about CDs is the par value is also the, the market value or the book, the book value. Or you, we don't have any securities in there right now. So in that case, depending on what, you know, as interest rates move, your market value and your par value can adjust. So that is, that's what the city has. Obviously, you know, with a CD, there's a prepayment penalty if you take them out early.
Don't touch, don't touch me.
Yeah, yeah. Unless you really have to, you really don't want to.
Right.
But, yeah, really, the, the majority of the city's funds are immediately available.
Okay, okay. Going to number seventy-five. These are national statistics. Is there any way to, to modify, so we could look at this maybe North Texas regional or Texas? I'm going back to some comments like our, our governor has said, if you were to take the gross domestic product of the state of Texas alone.
Right.
As a world economy, it ranks number eight in the world.
Right.
And thinking, if these, if this data that you're showing us is national, would it be more relevant to us to understand what it looks like for North Texas or, or as a Texas GDP and those kinds of data?
Yeah, I think the, the main, and it could, it could. I think that the main thing here is just kind of give an overall picture, just kind of the, the overall economy, just kind of the general terms. Because the, the, what's, I guess, kind of what we're looking at here is what's going to move the Fed? Because what the Fed does is going to impact Duncanville.
Right, yeah.
And so they're going to drive that, not necessarily off of what Texas or California's doing. It's going to be, they're looking at kind of the national picture. So we're, we're kind of going with, what's the Fed looking at? What's going to motivate them to, to move one way or another, so?
And we've got this economic engine going in Texas. It's like nobody's ever seen anything before.
Thankfully, yes, yes.
You're looking at the Texas GDP versus the, the national economic data. They're not dichotomous, but they, they certainly talk to each other in terms of how Texas affects the national.
Yeah, yeah. And, and what the, but what, and, yeah, so what the Fed does, does impact Texas in that, you know, those higher interest rates, even as well as we're doing, it dam, it puts a damper on economic growth when you've got those higher interest rates, so.
Okay, thank you. And you have any questions from Council? I'm not looking at lights. I'm looking at people now. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, we still have one executive session to do, so I'm going to recess our city council session. City Secretary, the timestamp is eight fifty-four. City Secretary, the timestamp is 8:54. Our city council members, if you'd please go?
We are back on, we are reconvening. City Council, timestamp on that is going to be 9:48. And going on to Item 5A, Items for Individual Consideration, Taking Necessary Action as result of Executive Session, there is no action to be taken as a result of Executive Session for Items 1, 2, and 3 of the agenda with the conclusion of all of our city business tonight. We are closing, we are adjourning tonight's city council meeting at 9:49.